You got what, four hundred ninety-five people in here, is that right? Holy smokes, I haven't started yet, this is wild. Welcome people. As you can see, there's some change in the kitchen, Kelly's got a new Rubbermaid table back there. Temporary uh countertop four, big addition. Been watching the comments here for the past five minutes or so, a lot of uh. A lot of newbies here, it looks like to me, a lot of East Coasters, which is nice. Kelly's over here making her sourdough nuts.
Yes, I've got garlic nuts in the making, we're having steak and garlic nuts for supper. That's exciting.
Alright, Kelly's favorite question to ask, uh this is our third town hall meeting, first public. Uh Kelly's favorite question is, I ask where everyone's from, I'm seeing everyone pop up here right now.
Yes, tell us where you're from, you guys, we wanna know where in the world you are. I know for some of you guys, it's morning, some of you guys it's evening, you're having your supper, or like getting ready for bed or whatnot. Some of you are just waking up, oh my gosh, here we go, Illinois, Texas, Arkansas, Vancouver, Florida. Oh, Virginia, hey guys.
See some new pieces here, people wanna see some new pieces, oh, got some new pieces. Just seen one, flew past.
Florida, Ireland, Australia.
Fox call Newfoundland, what do you get?
What's up?
Twelve hundred people here, boss, holy smokes, sorry, well. Lot more people here uh this week, we've done this two Wednesdays prior to this, but up until now, it's been members only. Um and that's like the YouTube membership program, we just started doing that a couple of weeks ago. The idea was to keep these live streams um for the members only, to talk about the nonprofit that we're starting here as a community together. Uh but every one of that membership, um who is now fourteen hundred twenty-seven members. Everybody voted and everyone agreed that we should open it up public. There shouldn't be any special privilege for a paying member compared to a not paying member. Everyone who's here wants to watch should be able to watch for free, you shouldn't have to pay for anything, so. That's why we're here, thank you to everyone who is a member, um and decided to open up your heart. Like we are here and spread the love for all seventy hundred thirty-eight Scouts that are here right now. Uh that's unreal, um it's just more people to hear the message, so. Um we're not on here just to yawn about YouTube, we can talk about YouTube and we will read a bunch of your comments. Um as we go through this, we're really here to talk about, thank you my love.
It's really hot.
We're really here to talk about Camp Scout, which is the nonprofit. That uh myself and Kelly are spearheading out here along with your help in this community and we're all gonna work together, share your ideas. Start a nonprofit and the whole idea with that is to reconnect people with the outdoors through community-based. Uh outdoor experiences and education.
Simple as she goes, friends, that's pretty much it.
It's that simple, so that's what we're here to talk about. Also, I'm seeing some money rolling already, like people are sending in, you can see maybe in your screen. People are sending money, any money that comes in the, in these chats, which thank you for everyone, Kismar, I'm seeing one pass here, Kismar. Seventy dollars and eleven cents so far, every nickel raised in these live streams will be donated directly to the nonprofit, which is Camp Scout. Uh right now in our Camp Scout treasury, we have eight thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. Thanks to the forty hundred twenty-seven members, everyone who's been sending in super likes in the live chat, I mean, that's pretty, pretty great, three weeks into this thing. And we have a long way to go.
Yes, and that is all for Camp Scout, so that is gonna be for all the projects. And all the uh happenings, and all the behind the scenes and getting you guys out here.
Yeah, the whole idea here is, is to take advantage of the year we live in twenty twenty-five. And the special community of people that you guys all are, so you can read the comments in these videos. Uh with a lot of love in the comment section, all you people out there, not just random viewers, you're. However YouTube's finding out, you're a good bunch of, bunch of people. This whole idea is to use that machine we got here, and we got this frictionless machine. Where between all of us, where you guys just watching the Sunday videos, is creating. Fuel for this machine that we can use it to pay for Camp Scout, use it to pay for lawyers, for accountants, for whatever, to keep this thing on track. Um and it's just a big self-sufficient machine, we don't need anyone else, we don't need big corporate sponsors. We don't need uh, you know, the government to give us their money, great if they do, and we'll take that too. But with you, all of you out there and us here together, um it's a frictionless machine, so. After seeing all the love and stuff you guys have sent in a lot of these videos, it was uh. Those dogs are here trying to take your attention. It would be a crying shame to not try and do something special here together. Um so we got so many good people here, like there's like how many people, twenty-four hundred people here right now.
Guys, thank you Steve, Steve H, for the love.
Three hundred bucks, three hundred and three dollars and thirty-one cents. Unreal, that's the power of the internet people, um I don't believe you gotta be a millionaire. In order to start a nonprofit and start doing good things for the world, um just by watching the videos, you're gonna be a part of that and help do it. And we're keeping everything very transparent, um all the numbers, all the stats, we want you guys to understand. How much is coming in and how much is going out, if you do send five bucks here, uh we want you to be able to see where that goes, not just on paper. Um but like with these videos, um we'll keep making videos here at the house and doing our normal life, but. Once we're out doing a Camp Scout thing for the nonprofit, we wanna show that too, we want you guys to really feel like you're part of this. And your voice is heard and yeah, I think it's great, it makes me so excited, it's all I think about.
Yeah, it's, it's really exciting, it's a whole other. Chapter of the journey, of the Scout journey, and yeah, we're really excited to. Of course, do our regular Sunday videos of what we're doing at the house, both of us, our family. But it will be super fun to document the progression of Camp Scout and what it turns into, cuz. It's been an idea in my lover's brain for many, many years, and to see it come to fruition. And for all of you guys to be so behind it and be like, yeah, we won Camp Scout, this is amazing. Um it's so incredible, you guys, I mean. It really blows us away and it just shows that there are so many good people in the world. Thank you Tammy, there are so many good people in the world who want good things to happen. And who are willing to contribute, whether that is you watching the Sunday videos that are free for you, you just, you just watch them, right? And that's amazing, or for people who are donating, it's all, it's just all coming together. And it's so, I, I can't even articulate myself right now.
Machine, most nonprofits and charities, they gotta do, jump through so many hoops, they get the funding for something like this. With the internet, with this YouTube community, it's not, not, even without you guys sending money, I'm telling you, um just with the views, if we make. Um partnerships with some gear companies, whatever, we can get the money, all of us gather, all our voices are pretty loud. Um so next question is, if this is your first town hall, is why? Uh why do we need Camp Scout, and like really what is Camp Scout? I mean, I think the reason why we need Camp Scout is pretty obvious, um you talk to any grandfather, any parent, um grandparent. Um and you ask them about the younger generations, pretty much everyone I've talked to or heard from. Everyone kinda agrees that they're somewhat worried about the younger generations coming up. That um they're more disconnected, they're not very capable with their hands. They're just not very capable with their bodies, so they don't move around much in these working environments. Um and also that they're disconnected with the outdoors itself. Too much time in the wrong places, which um I've said it before, it's not their fault. The kids haven't changed on thing, I think that the times have changed, here, everybody is worried about this. But not a whole lot of people is doing anything about it, I'm sure there are people out there doing stuff, but I haven't heard it much around here, around these parts. The government certainly doesn't seem to be doing much, um there's a lot going on in the world and there's a lot of battles of fight. But we, we're pretty passionate that uh, you know, this is the one we wanna take on and it's very important. If we don't do it, no one else is gonna, and time slips by, you know, another couple of generations. The idea of just going out, staying in the woods in a tent is so foreign, it's already become pretty foreign, not to mention that a lot of. Things in the outdoors now and events and trips and experiences are becoming for the one percent, everything is expensive. You want, if you have no experience, um sea kayaking, you don't have a sea kayak, you have no friends at Sea Kayak. Just to get the instructional education from an instructor to teach you isn't cheap, and then the gear, the equipment, the time. All of it, um and that's where we want Camp Scout to come in and connect those dots and uh help facilitate that and use all, all these funds. Um to help make that happen in, in multiple different ways. Eight hundred seventy-five dollars, fifty cents. Wow, how many minutes is this, nine minutes, nine minutes, people.
Twenty-nine hundred, or yeah, twenty-nine hundred of you guys.
Also, don't wanna put too much emphasis on that, we're not here, don't. Do not feel like you need to send anything, please, I'm telling you, don't, everyone who is, thank you so much. But really, you don't need to, um and the people that are sending it, um they don't expect it to either, that's why all the members were paying ten dollars a month. Um and what, what we told them was, this would be just for them, they all said, no, don't make it just for us, let's make it public, let's make, let the non-paying people. Um be a part of this too, because you know, if there's more power, the more voices you got, the more power we have.
Absolutely, yeah.
Scout Gang for life.
Scout Gang. You guys are so awesome.
Yeah, you can see the members, the members' comments got like a little symbol beside, that's the only difference.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Someone said they're from Manassas, Virginia, that's not too far from where I'm from, that's really cool, it's great to see you, my friend. Oh my goodness. Becca, thank you. Oh my goodness, yes, full transparency, full transparency, that's what we're all about here.
I mean, cuz how many charities and, and organizations are in the world, and you know, you, you donate your five bucks or ten bucks, whatever it is and. I mean, for surely, um some good things are happening behind the scenes, but you don't get to see it. I mean, we live in a visual world, I'd like to be able to see where my ten bucks is going and see what's happening, you know what I mean? And also, it's not gonna get sucked up in administration, administrative costs, um Camp Scout right now in total is myself and Kelly. Um my brother-in-law Mitch and my sister Danielle are now involved and they're helping to moderate this chat. Um answering emails and stuff or, or monitoring the emails. Um a lawyer and accountant are being paid, so they're, they're just like paid people, uh but that's it. And with time, we'll need more for sure, but. Um I've heard some crazy stats that most nonprofits, like you know, sixty percent of the money gets sucked up into. Paying massive salaries and everything else, and we don't want that here, we wanna go directly from you right to the, the goodness. What do you say, what do you wanna say?
Matthew, I just wanna say thank you.
Hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks, that goes so far.
One point one thousand, but again, uh it's not about that, you know, it's great, we do need fundraised, something we do need to talk about, how we're gonna. Really fundraise, uh cuz we're gonna need some serious cash, because. In our other member, our other chats, we talked about what we can do, want the options there, and everyone already kinda voted, that land is the way to go. Um everyone, this might be your first time, talk quickly about like what Camp Scout is. Um and like what the actual plan is. Um there's a few different ways to do it, Camp Scout's a nonprofit, we're gonna be a nonprofit organization. And maybe eventually move into a registered charity and do the whole receipt thing, but right now we're starting slow, which is a. Uh nonprofit organization, um there's multiple ways we think we can give goodness out. Um one is a physical camp, multiple over the years, we'll start off with just one flagship. Physical camp, you know, twenty acre or more piece of raw land. Um that will turn into a very natural feeling campground with many tent sites, tent only. Tent sites as we can fit on there without cutting all the trees down, put one little community building in the center. And we'll have that place open all year round, we'll have a one-page scout or a volunteer scout there year-round to watch and manage the camp. Um and you'll be able to access that place hundred percent for free, they'll show up, pack your car. Um get your tent or borrow a scout tent, stay for free and it won't cost you the forty dollars a night. It costs at a camp, where you go to a campground and you pull up your car, it's not for just mom and pop anymore. Um you know, out on a, on a cheap holiday, you're looking at forty bucks a night just to pitch a tank. That's not including everything else, so Camp Scout is all about being free, we're gonna use all these funds, internet funds. To fuel this thing, everything is free, so you can show up, stay in your tent, we'll host workshops from there. Uh maybe we bring in, you know, someone like Kelly to come in and teach sea class, or to bring in some. Uh you know, Survivor Man type guy, come in and teach some bushcraft stuff for a kayaking guide. Uh we can use that place to jump off from expeditions and trips, um education. And maybe we have, you know, a yearly big meet-up there, or multiple gatherings there every year. And in general, just a piece of land we can protect, allow open access to everybody for free. And have all the, all the stuff you would there, you'd wanna use for free again, all of it being free. Uh that's the camp, and in my mind, that was like, that was, that was down the line, that would be like, you know. Three, four years down the line, we would get a camp, um so I thought, thought that was, you know, a very lofty dream. According to all you Scouts, everyone wants it, and what we're gonna call it, according to members, is Scoutland. Scoutland is Camp Scout number one, here in Newfoundland, um that's the plan, other. Smaller, easier ways that we can access people, we know a lot of people watching, like thirty-five hundred thirty-three people here right now. Um a lot of people thinking, okay, yeah, a camp would be great, but like, I'm not gonna be able to get to that camp, that summer camp up in Canada or wherever it is. Um and, and you know what, most chances, most people won't be able to get there, for whatever reason, that's just the world we live in. So my main idea was a charter program, Scout Outdoors, Camp Scout Charter Program. Where you basically take a page out of the Boy Scouts and a page out of Motorcycle Club, we mix them together. And you at home or a teacher or leader in your community, um that has the knowledge or doesn't, just has the drive. To start your own Camp Scout Charter Club, and we'll give you a designation, we'll give you a number, a flag. We'll have um, you know, monthly check-ins with you, give you some um material to work off of. Uniforms, equipment, if you guys are gonna be focused in mountain biking. We'll bring you some mountain bike instructors and pay for that, we'll get you the bikes, if you guys are gonna be hikers, we'll help you get that going, if you need education. We'll pay for the third-party educators to come and do that, um and I think the Charter Program, long-term. Is gonna be the real bread and butter, I mean, physical camp is great, for the Charter Program, we can reach a lot of people. And that has no boundaries on borders, that could be anywhere in the world, um Camp Charter Program. Now, lawyers say there's a lot of logistics of that, uh insurance, there's a lot of logistics, insurance, all that BS. We don't care of that, we're not worried with the noise, we'll just make it happen with time. The other big one was an outdoor scholarship program, this Camp Scout Adventure Scholarship Program. Um and that's where, let's say the scholarship's for five thousand bucks, anybody could apply for the scholarship, tell us your dream trip. Tell us the trip that you're trying to go on, it could be a kid that's trying to run across America, it could be an old-timer that's looking to row down the river. Um in his, in his province, whatever it is, and each year we'll pick so many people to fund their trip. Because a lot of people can't get on these trips for a lack of cost. But the nice thing about the scholarship pr- program is, once we start doing that and we start talking about that with you, even right now talking about that. You can't help but think like, hmm, what would I do with five thousand bucks, someone gave me free five thousand bucks, that would be my dream trip, and that's, that's the real winner. Sure, we only give away a few scholarships a year, but all the people are sitting home thinking about that, like, you know what? I don't actually need five grand to do that, I got the, an old pedal bike back there and I got a pair of running shoes over there, I'll just go make it happen on my own. Um and that's, that's what it's all about, we're all just, we're here just trying to light the fire. There's more too, I'll take, take a breath here.
Yes, yes.
What we got going on here? One point six thousand dollars. Sixteen hundred dollars people.
Goodness me.
Thirty-five hundred seventy-seven Scouts, that's amazing.
That is.
Imagine putting thirty-five hundred people in a room, how big of a room, that'd be a pretty big room.
Oh my gosh, I saw someone from Noakesville, Virginia, that's so close to me too, that's like thirty minutes away from my family, anyway, that's super cool, buddy. There is Bill Washington, let's see here.
Hotel Scout.
Hotel Scout.
Oh, no, no, it's the Hall of Scouts.
Oh, oh yes. Yeah, we're glad, we love the feedback here, guys, thank you. Oh my gosh, okay, uh Gary. My wife wants to know if you plan on doing an island fireman calendar.
I know, we're eating firemen.
Oh, hmm, well lumberjack calendar, hmm, we've actually joked about that before, that would be hilarious.
Yeah, Smitty, you got Gord, Patty.
Yeah, that's true, you got all the boys on it. Oh, that's awesome, Scoutsville. Yeah, everyone, everyone's super stoked about it, yeah, it's awesome.
So yeah, um first thing is land, um in the last meeting, people talked about land, uh that's what they want and. We're working on it, uh we haven't bought anything, obviously, and we, we're not gonna make any major decisions without letting everybody know. And getting everyone's feedback, we're not just gonna go ahead and spend this money, eighty-six hundred dollars and whatever else is coming in. Uh we're gonna talk, it's all about transparency, we do want you to feel like you're part of this. Cheers to Scoutland, Little Gomez.
Little Gomez, yes sir, I love it, love it, love it.
Yep, um so yeah, there's multiple options with the land, we have looked at a couple uh private pieces of land, uh and we're still looking. It's really hard to find here in Newfoundland, big pieces of private land for sale, we're, we're looking for twenty acres or more. On the ocean, really want to be on the ocean, because there's so much uh experience here in the ocean. Um and the coastline could be kayaking, could be fishing, you know, look for sea glass, whatever it is, you wanna be by the ocean, if you're in Newfoundland, in my mind. So that's one route, we're a long ways off cost-wise for that, another route is to ask the government for land. And that is something that we're, we're going down to, we're venturing down that way, we're putting together a proposal, excuse me, to apply for some. Land here in Newfoundland, a lot of newbies watching this, you probably know, if you've looked at land map, you've heard. A lot of the island right now is gobbled up with these wind turbines, um there, there're not actually wind turbines there, but if you look on the maps. It's all held and saved for the future wind turbines, so a lot of locations that we want are currently off. You know, off the grabs, but we do think that with enough of us asking for it and we have a good plan in place. I can't see how they could say no, um so it's gonna take some time to get that, right?
Yeah, we are working on all of our options, because when it does come to Scoutland, number one, first camp. We really want it to be a place where lots of you guys can come, it doesn't feel cramped. Um you know, there's different like variants in the land, like wooded, open, a big beach. Um rocky stuff, you know, a little bit of challenging terrain, um also accessibility, we want people to be able to just walk on in. Um so that's really important to us, and it'll probably take some time to find like the proper piece of land, but obviously. We are okay with that, like this is a lifelong thing that we're doing here, and. There's plenty of time, there's plenty of time, and I think it's best not to jump on like the first property or something that's available. As you guys may know, if you guys have ever bought a house or bought property or anything like that before, um to check out your options, so. We are looking into the private land, we are looking into the government grants. And those will probably take some time, especially the government grants, so we're doing our best we can with searching around the island. For something that we can find.
It'll take time.
Yeah, it'll take time, but like we said, we really wanna have a spot on the ocean, because for you guys who maybe don't get the ocean. Where you're from, maybe you're like literally inland, inland, wherever you are. It's so amazing just to be able to look out, see the water, jump on in, um. Something really cool about Newfoundland, we have like the light-up plankton in the water. Which is amazing, yeah, we call it, they all call them sparkles here, um when we leave on the boat at nighttime, if they're active. Like at night or whatever, you can see just streaks of blue sparks, it looks like you're in the galaxies, it's absolutely incredible. So we love especially to be able to like bring your eyes out and do that and see that and experience it. Um cuz you don't have to go to like the tropics to see that, you know? Yeah, it's right here in Newfoundland.
One day I'm gonna see someone, someone's boss, yeah, that's right, someone's asked for your oven, that is. That is new, we'll show you guys that before we're done, we'll, we'll take you guys on a walk around and see what we've got done. That's Kelly's new propane oven, it's about, I'd say at least a good thirty years old. Maybe, we should actually Google it, but we'll show you, it's got the old classic wooden light.
Yeah, she's, she's older than me. That's for sure, yep, we always like to get uh new to us things, right? And the older the better, really.
First thing though, this is new stuff, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, it's so exciting, we cooked frozen pizza the first night we got in Angst, we were so excited. And yeah, the last year, we've been cooking on the two-burner-like Camp Coleman stove. I'm sure if you guys have been camping, you know what that is, uh yeah, it is quite challenging to make big full meals with just two burners. And it takes a very long time, so I feel like the queen up in here, now that I got four burners and an oven, it's pretty amazing.
Still got the original, you can't see it, we'll show you at the end, but the old wood stove oven's still right here, right beside us, and she's not going anywhere. We're gonna need it, um it's already, it's a really windy day today, it's not very cold. Uh but I could see, I was able to get wood earlier, I was like, ooh, with this wind and twenty below, we would need this thing going right now. Uh the heat wouldn't make it from out there into here, um but this thing going and in this kitchen, all insulated, oh.
Yeah, it is really warm in here, cuz you guys know, this is the only part of the house that's insulated, since we recently built it. Hard truth with Lisa, good to see you, my dear, top fan here, watched your channel so long, I wanna come there so bad. My husband out also, I wanna find a house like you did and redo it all, yes, my dear.
You should.
You should, it is very rewarding.
Lot of houses out there, people. You want a cheap house, you can't afford a, you know, store-bought house, find something that's condemned, rundown. I mean, I mean, it's a lot of work, um and it would be easier to sit here and down and build new. I can see that now, especially the past few days, we've gotten into some serious rentals here and uh. We're basically building a whole new house from the inside out. But it is, I mean, it's working, we're doing it, one point nine thousand dollars, my lord, it's amazing, that's what I mean, what do we need anyone's help for?
Yeah, and the coolest part about Camp Scout too is unlike big operations. There are no big talking heads above us, like pulling puppet strings to make us do things or say things or whatever, it's literally just you and me. Which is amazing. And we're not asking for anything, we just want to be able to bring this to you guys and, yeah, and do it all for free. So that everyone can have a chance to come out, you know, and I think it's really great. Um because you know, travel is expensive, like regardless where you go, for gas, whatever, plane tickets, it is expensive, so if we can lighten the load. You know, you wanna come stay at Scoutland for seven days, twelve days, boom, come on, my love, let's go, um.
Come learn something, I agree, I feel like come on down Scoutland for some, a week-long outdoor workshop, teaching you, you know. Wilderness first aid, or maybe it's, you know, how to be a hippie on the beach like Kelly, for a week or whatever it is.
Yeah, or you teaching people how to like, like we could even all construct, uh like log, a log cabin together, like the central meeting place. That would be so cool, have kids with chainsaws in their hands.
That's the other thing too, we gotta point that out, as soon as we do get that land and we got all the legal paperwork and we got some insurance and a waiver. Doors open, baby, uh we don't need anything there, part of the fun, I think, is gonna be letting all you guys come out and help us build it. And we actually build it, we'll film it, we'll show it, uh maybe it's a second video per week kinda thing, we have one video here, another video from the camp, who knows, but. Um we do it together, you know, in my mind. Lawyers and insurance people said a lot of stuff, but at the end of the day, you can waive or a lot of the way, as long as you're willing to sign a little piece of papers, yeah, we don't hold anything accountable, blah, 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 while I'm here working. Sign a piece of paper, grab your chainsaw and start cutting, and uh that's gonna be a lot of fun, there's gonna be a lot of learning. Um possible just by building the camp and especially if like the local youth here in Newfoundland, you're about to come out for the weekend and. Um you get some experience, what the kid getting, get some experience building some stuff. Making trails, um cutting wood, um building some tent sites, um.
Build a fence for the garden, for the community garden.
Build gardens.
Yeah, we wanna have community gardens, so when you guys do come and stay, you'll have fresh fruit, food to pick from. All sorts of herbs, veggies. Maybe we'll even get some chickens out there, that would be so cool, you guys can have fresh eggs.
Yep, there you go, he's on rate, Dewey Muggles, hopefully we can teach these kids some bushcraft and carpentry, that would be nice. That's it, absolutely, and that also comes back to like the whole idea of the charter programs. Um not just, let's say you don't have just a charter club, let's just say you're some. Person that's a, a welder lady, I don't know why, let's come back to the welder, but some welder lady got into comments, I don't know how we seen it. She said, hey, I'm, I'm a welder, she explained herself, I'm very experienced, I'm in this part of the States and I always wanted to do. Some welding courses and just, and just share what I know with the, with youth, right? And I was thinking like, that's perfect, it doesn't have to be outdoors, it doesn't have to be the granola hiking or, or kayaking, why couldn't it be just hands-on skills? I mean, that's what all the parents say and the grandparents say, the kids are useless, everyone thinks, they can't run a welder, they can't build a house, I mean, they can. They just need someone to show them, and they gotta be a, a reason for it, it's gotta be cool, I guess. So yeah, I love the idea of, of helping facilitate stuff like that and we don't have to do that, we're not gonna be teaching welding, but we wanna help connect the dots, um. And that's another big question I've been working on all week and trying to figure it out, is how do we vet people? We've been having a lot of people reach out over the past three weeks and offer their services, um and a lot of qualified professionals. Uh we've had some lawyers, we've had people that have, have been uh running serious charities for years and, and camps and. Everything else you can imagine, website designers, all this stuff, um which is great, and we want all the help we get, we need all the help. The, the thing is, like how do we vet, um? The the thing is, like, how do we vet um? Yeah, you can do interview process, I guess, but uh like I'm concerned cuz this is all a digital thing. We're just reading a digital email from someone, we don't know who they are. Um and with all technology nowadays of uh. Faking stuff and whatnot, I'm like, hey, how do we know that this website designer that we just partnered up with here, who volunteered their time, not even a paying client? How do we know that they're not in there doing something that shouldn't be done? You know what I mean? So we wanna keep this as volunteer as possible cuz that keeps costs down. If we gotta pay someone to do everything that we're doing, it's gonna eat into um the money for the goodness. You know, the whole idea is like cut all the costs, all the admin costs, all that BS is covered or free. And yeah, if you got an idea, let's see, what do you got here? Zoom meetings, yeah, zoom, of course, there's zoom meetings, but I mean. Is a zoom meeting enough to really know if someone's trustworthy enough to hand them, you know, the keys to to everything? Request links to previous work, yeah, of course. Please fix the channel, you're moving, I'll use phone on the side.
Is it really? No, it's not moving, you got us thinking there was a ghost in our house, come on. No, she's just tilted, like a lot of the other stuff in our house, a little crooked, that's right. She's actually not on the center beam. It's like off a little bit, so yeah, she's a little uh wonky, don't worry about that.
Edward, Edward, you need to start a Discord community. We've been seeing that a lot. Um people were saying that last week with Discord. I think you guys are right. I had no idea what Discord was and and like its capabilities, been looking into it this week. Lawyers can check, yeah, that's right. Um but yeah, we need a Discord, so we're gonna get someone to set up a Discord. Um so you guys can all chat amongst yourselves, maybe we can share. I like the idea of sharing resume, uh in my mind, I'm like, okay, great, we got Joe Dick from down in small town Kentucky. And he's professional doing X, Y, Z, and we wanna hire him. I like the idea of taking all his information, his resume, and putting it in Discord, putting it on here, wherever, however you have it, share with everybody. Um and tell them that we're gonna do that. I like the idea of whoever's working for us to know that. There's five hundred or how many, how many thousand scouts, like four hundred and seventy thousand scouts who are gonna hold you liable if you do anything wrong. Um maybe that's too much, maybe most people will walk away from that. Four hundred and sixty scouts, you know, that's that's a lot of liability.
I think you just make a good application and. Vet process, like maybe we're not the first ones they talk to, or they talk to someone on the team first, and then if it, you know, passes through. Then we get to them and like we can make the final decision like based on like, you know, their merit or intuition. You know? Yeah.
I guess. It's a it's a hard one.
It is a tough one.
We've never done anything like this before, right? You know, we've never hired someone for anything, that. Uh a couple of weeks ago, we went to a lawyer, first time was ever in a lawyer's office, ever. Um this is all new to us, so luckily we got all you guys for your your good advice. We do learn a lot from the comments and emails, we really do. Three nine hundred people in here.
Wow, good lord.
It's amazing.
My goodness, you guys.
Application like a job, yep.
Yeah. Oh, and check references, like check their references, like people they worked for or whatnot. Make sure it's legit. That's a good point.
How many members? Fourteen, fourteen hundred and twenty seven monthly Scout members.
Also, I've seen people pop up and subscribe to it right now, so there's probably more.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says, welcome to the Scout membership.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Anyone who's doing that, boys, God love you. Um that's gonna be the backbone in this whole thing, all the membership money, every nickel of it donated straight into the nonprofit. Seen people ask about website and stuff, yes, the website is underway, I mean. Really, the only reason the website isn't done is lack of time. I mean, me and Kelly, we we, we put lots of hours in, but I gotta tell you, we're we're pretty bad at being adults, like. We're great procrastinators, really are. Um now that we're sitting down doing nothing or being lazy, but it's like. Oh yeah, the website, that's right, all domain and all this stuff is there, just gotta go in and organize and dress it up.
Yes, there is a very big difference, as I'm sure you guys know, from admin work and like computer work. Versus like working with your hands work. They're both so hard in their own way, and when you're exhausted and tired from the hands on work. The last thing you're thinking of is to jump on the computer for six hours and to keep working. Which we do do for the YouTube videos, Matt stays up literally all night making sure these videos get out and. I mean, it's amazing, I don't know how he does it, but he does. Um but yeah, it's just uh, yeah, as as things progress here. I think we will definitely have more time and mental energy and space to get that stuff done, but yeah, the website is forming. I need to do some final touches on it, add some stuff, put some flair on it, and uh yeah, then it'll be ready to go, so.
And merch, merch merch is happening too, the, we talked about last week, the merch order is in. Um and we're not just gonna be doing it like a print on demand thing where you you press order on your side and then it just starts pumping out of the. You know, some factory over, you know, overseas somewhere, it's not gonna be like that, it's all gonna be handled ourselves, my sister is taking it upon herself. She lives up in Calgary, Alberta, she or she lives, not Calgary, the shirt place is in Calgary. She'll actually go there, it's all gonna be screen printed, she's gonna have inventory at her house and she will actually physically mail out your package each time as you order it. And that way we got more control over your experience, we don't wanna just take the easy route. And we can set the whole store up in a couple hours and not actually touch or see anything. We wanted to be a little bit more grassroots in that, even though it's a little more costly um to do so. We think it's nicer to know that each order is being handled with care, we get put a letter in there. Christmas time, you get put a whatever in there. Um it's a lot more options when you're doing the shipping yourself and whatnot, so that's coming, that's coming real quick.
Yes, for sure. Yeah, there's a big difference, I'm sure you guys know, from ordering things online or Amazon. Um or from ordering from like a small business, the experience you get. When you open up a package from someone who's handmade something, packed it. Per like so sweet and kindly, like a little experience, is so much better. Than opening that Amazon package with the blue tape and being like, what did I even get in here? And it's just like the item and that's it. That is so boring. Um you know, now th- they're doing millions and billions of orders, whatever. We are not, we are going the grassroots way. And um yeah, and from everything from the screen printing that is done by a person. To bringing it over to Danielle, his sister's house, to packing it up, his sister is going to be packing everything. And yeah, like he said, we'll be able to do little fun touches for different like holidays or seasons, which I'm very excited about, yeah.
Actually, we did get her, kinda brings us back to the whole partnering up with you people. First time we've actually done anything with this random scope from the internet who we've connected with. Um I'm not gonna share his full information now, but we will with time if it all goes good. A fellow named Chris from Ireland, hope you're here, Chris, watching. He reached out and we've had some chats on the email and we've had a Zoom call now with uh my sister, him, and my brother-in-law, myself. Um and he's volunteering to start designing up the Camp Scout logo and some Camp Scout uh official merch. So all as a volunteer thing, just out of goodness of his heart, so thank you, Chris, and again, that's the example of the power of this online community, you know. It's forty three hundred and ninety eight people here right now. I guarantee you, those forty three hundred and ninety eight people, there's enough experience and knowledge there. To actually physically build that camp, enough people to help put it all on paper and make sure we don't get screwed from legal or insurance along the way. Um and enough people to help keep preaching it, like every time any of you guys go out and talk about this meeting, oh, hey, I was on a meeting last night and. Yeah, man, we're starting on, we're starting to fuck the nonprofit, oop, I cursed. Yeah, uh I know what I was saying there.
You just get in the zone, you're so silly, you really are, oh my gosh. Yeah, guys, everyone thinks it's so funny.
I I totally lost my train of thought there, I try and censor myself, not a good thing. If you guys heard me talk fully free. My god, you would rush the children out of the room as fast as you could. I think what I was saying was, out of all the people are here just in this chat, there's enough people here um to come together and do it. It really is, and uh yeah, we're gonna do it.
All hands on deck, baby.
All hands on deck, forty hundred and fifty four s- scouts.
What, you guys, welcome, welcome, holy smokes.
Yes, unreal.
Yes, this is one of our uh favorite things to do in the middle of the week, cuz it's Wednesday for us here. And smack dab in the middle of the week, and yeah, it's just nice to catch up with you guys before uh for Sunday's video. So it's nice to see you guys and check in with you guys. Yes, it takes a village, and I also saw people saying, take it slow, don't burn out.
Yeah, take it slow. We we are trying to take it slow and that's why if you have emailed or sent a letter or something, it may not be responded to yet, it's lack of time. Um so we don't wanna just firm all this stuff out, like I'd rather not respond to something and have someone else respond personally. When it comes to a comment or anything like this, it wouldn't be from us or nothing. Yeah, like, look, look at this, all these people, forty four hundred people, what a better time. Start a place where people can go, everyone, you know, anyone that's got a s- a summer camp experience, I go, I went, I never went to camp. I always wanted to, but everyone I heard talk about summer camp as a kid. It always like, it's one of those core memories, it sticks with them. Um what a better time to start Scootland and give like generations of youth. That core memory of like, oh man, that summer at Scootland, god, it was great, and not just that, it's gonna be the the summer camp is on YouTube. You know, like, even though they're not gonna be on YouTube, the whole idea, kids are gonna wanna go to Scootland just cuz they know it's associated with YouTube. We're gonna be able, us together here, this community and these cameras, we're gonna be able to make the woods seem a little bit cooler. You know, the woods is plenty cool, don't need to tell you hopefully, but to younger kids, we're gonna make it seem a little bit cooler. And that's great, you know, that's great, and it goes a lot further past than just being cool. Nature, the woods, um there's different levels of that, but it's just good for you. Just walking in a park trail and standing, surrounded by trees and just being there, just standing there doing nothing. It's good, that's good medicine, it's good for you. Um and you can go beyond that all the way to getting out there so far, so deep, in into the void. And really, in my mind, transcend and feel like you're out of this world. Um yeah, there's so much power out in nature, and I think if the younger generation's gonna see that, I think they're ready for it, I think they want it. Technology's great, we use technology right now. We're definitely not anti-technology, there's a laptop here, a phone there. We're editing videos every week, we got fancy cameras, we love technology too. Um we're doing all this on a Starlink Wi-Fi. Um first balance to it, like we use the stuff like this, soon as this is off now, we don't need it. Uh we're not carrying it around our pocket all day long, we're not checking it constantly. Um kind of good example that you can, you can have it and not abuse it. I feel like we're pretty good at not abusing it. We do like our movies and shows, um not all the time, but when we watch something, we watch them. Uh but we're not just sitting here all day scrolling and that thing is unhooked to us, we can leave the house, now that I think, oh, where's my phone?
Yeah, oh my gosh, where's my phone? Oh, my phone's dead, ah, like my phone is always dead. Uh my phone's always dead. Yeah, but like, like you're saying, um how, you know, we all have technology, it's kind of inevitable at this point. But I know, like, my mom's generation and like Gordy and so many other guys here and and you guys as well. I've heard so many stories of you guys saying like, oh, I would, my childhood was amazing, we didn't have phones. We would leave the house as soon as the sun rose, go out on our bikes, go do whatever, hang out with our friends, be outside all day, not come home till sunset. And there you go, you know, and that's what we really want Camp Scout or Scootland to feel like for these kids, is like, you know. Lock your phone in the car, you don't need it. Um and you have like this freedom that a lot of people don't get to experience, whether because you're not even living in a city or. Um there's like a, like a fear or something of like something bad happening to your kid or yourself or whatever. Um there's gonna be people there, there's gonna be, you know, all things, sorts of things in place. Um for that like safety aspect and like for the freedom. We want you guys to feel the freedom of being able to be outside and not be worried and not be uh, you know, scared of the woods. Or, you know, learn how to build a fire. I still struggle making a fire sometimes. Yeah, I sometimes struggle, but it's things like that, like I'm twenty six years old and I still need help. Um and there's so much that I don't know and um. To be able to be like learning alongside other people is really empowering too. Um and you learn from other people, monkey see, monkey do, you really can learn a lot. Um and you know, you don't always have to be the one making the mistakes sometimes, and I find most times I learn best when I make a mistake. Um because then you figure out what to do instead. Um but yeah, I would love for Scootland, Camp Scout to bring back that like. Eighties mentality of like, see ya, mom, I'm leaving the tent, I'll see you at supper. You know, and just, I made friends with little Johnny and Suzie and we're gonna go out kayaking, see ya, mom. Um and everyone feels great and comfortable and there's things for adults to do. Um I I imagine like a little ki- fun songwriting campfire session, it'd be so much fun, how to write campfire songs. Yeah, I know.
Twenty three thousand miles we drive, yep, that's where we're gonna do the Camp Scout charters.
Yeah, and I, the charters will be a longer term thing, I think, because there's so much to it, um but we have to start somewhere.
Baby Scout t-shirts.
Baby Scout t-shirts, oh my goodness.
There's a lot of ideas, guys, we're taking it slow, um I've seen some people ask what it is, we know, maybe you're just coming late, you have to go back and check it out. I think it's going pretty good though, this is the first, this is our third meeting, this is the first one fully public. I think it's going a lot better than we realized. A lot of the members were worried about the chat. And there's gonna be too much in the chat and maybe some people in there not being very nice. Everything I'm seeing is love, 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 uh people are being very nice. There's not a whole lot of of bad stuff here, which is great, doesn't show how how good the community is.
Yeah, Phil J, boomers know this, Kelly, a stick and I'm happy, yes, man, a stick and some mud, make a little mud stew.
Hello from Greece, all the way to all the way from Greece.
Michelle, her son Liam's turning eight this Sunday, happy early birthday, my friend, being eight is awesome. Oh my goodness.
Time from France.
Wow.
Yeah, and also guys, no one feel like you need to send anything that you need to pay the ten bucks to join the membership, um you don't. And that's that's why we're all here doing the public thing, we don't, we don't wanna offer anything to some of us paying that we're not offering to the public. Cuz that's not how it should work. Camps go is all inclusive, it's all about being free, it's all about being whoever wants to walk in and have some. Um and that's why we gotta have these town hall meetings fully open like this, and I think it's great.
I also saw, is there an age, excuse me, is it for families only and is there an age range for people who can go to Scootland? No. It's open for literally everybody.
I think it'd be planned events, um you know, maybe there's different workshops geared to different age groups or different people. Maybe there's some of those get more geared toward moms and daughters and moms and daughters getaway or. Um also, there's option with Scootland, doesn't always have you something for us, um that we're organizing. In the down season when it's not so busy, why couldn't we open that place up and allow other clubs or even schools to come out there and, you know, rent for free? Um let's go land and use it for their own thing, you know, hockey team come out there or gym teacher take his all the students out there and stay for the weekend or. Just use the land, um just use it, why not? Um yeah, I think it's great, it's gonna be great. Was the link purge period not pearl yet, okay. Okay, guys, should we do a quick walk around the house, show them your new stove?
Oh, you don't wanna do rapid fire?
Okay, let's do rapid fire.
I like rapid fire questions. Okay, send in your questions, my friends, send in your questions, we'll do a few of these uh rapid fires. Let's see what we got here. Any Bigfoot stories up that way? No, but there are fairy stories.
Lots of fairies.
Lots of fairies.
They're real.
They're real, yes. That's right.
Oh, Kelly's twitchy fingers.
Oh my goodness. Have you started the bathroom? No, but she's gonna be started soon.
Start on the rock and foundation hopefully tomorrow, that rock is still there.
Yes, we are still working on the rock. Okay, I'm gonna address it because I've seen so many questions. Where are the cats?
Where are the cats?
Where in the world are these two adorable fluffy cats? And I know, I know, you're probably wondering this, some of you guys. Well, uh I rehomed the cats, we had them for a few months and. They started peeing all over literally everything, um crying all through the night, and as soon as I found out I was pregnant. That next day, we rehomed them over to Gord's sister, so Gord's sister has the kitty cats and they are living their best life. That next day, we rehomed them over to Gord's sister. So Gord's sister has the kitty cats and they are living their best life. Um, they're just across the harbor right over there and they're free range outside. Um, they love it, they love hunting, I get updates all the time, so they're very happy out there, two little wild little lions over there. But yes, you guys have been wondering about the cats, they're totally fine. Um, I just was a foster mom, that's all. But yeah, they're gonna be doing great. How is the piss pot? The piss pot is great. I like not having to go outside, especially on a night like this where it's wet and cold and windy. Are there any ghosts in the house? No, I don't think so. Not that I've noticed.
Peeing in the house, no. Yeah, the cats smell good.
Yeah, yeah, the cats were really, they were great and I love them, but yeah, the cat pee everywhere and now that we're having a baby, I couldn't, I could not do that.
A lot of people ask for the baby.
Yeah, any guy, girl or boy, you guys are gonna love this answer. We're not gonna find out until that little thing pops out. Yeah, that's right, we're gonna wait to find out the gender of our baby. Um, yeah.
Everything white.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, yeah, in terms of like colors and things, I've seen some questions like, oh, what what colors are you doing? I don't know, like sage green and tan, yellow, I don't know, um, nature colors? Yeah, those are my favorite colors too, right?
A lot of people ask for names. What's your top name?
Oh, we can't share our actual top names.
Really?
Yeah.
What about full transparency?
Darn.
Listen, let me ask you guys all this one, cause I've been, I've been asking this around. Uh, maybe, maybe there's some Seinfeld fans on here, I'm not sure, if you already maybe know Soda episode. Or Seven, you name her Soda or Seven, same kinda thing. Um, when I say the name, don't think about the thing that it is. Just think about that as a name. Hard to do, I know. Cooler. Coo- Cooler Clark, C O O L E R, like the Cooler, but like, you say it enough time with Cooler Clark. Or, can I say it?
What?
The other version of Cooler.
What's the other one? Say it, I don't care. They're not happening anyway. We're not naming our baby Cooler, might as well call him Yeti or Coleman.
That's what she always says. Little coo? Cooler's cool, see? It's alright.
Wicked name, no, Corey, no. Don't, don't feed that to him.
You say it enough, you say it enough, you wouldn't associate with the Cooler. Hey, come here Cooler, let's go in the truck.
Someone said Megatron, might as well be Megatron if we're going for Cooler.
Colt, Colt, cool. Scout, Colt, Scout Cooler Clark.
You guys are so funny. Coleman Gord, oh my god.
No Cooler.
Yes, are are we selling Big Red or what?
No.
No.
So guys, when it comes to the trike, we should, yeah, definitely address this.
Yeah.
We weren't planning on getting a new bike, um, that two hundred AM, that Honda trike, you've seen us use all this time. Um, she's still here and she still will be in service. We weren't planning on getting that new bike. Um, and like I said in the video, a fellow scout called us up here in Newfoundland. Um, and he's big, you know, just a big-hearted person. And he offers, offered a deal on that bike and we just couldn't say no.
Yeah.
And he really wanted it to come out here, not so we can see it in the videos, just cause he really wanted to go to home where. Not just call people and use it, it's here on the island and we have a little community of people here and he hopes that it's kinda gonna be the community tractor.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, I hope the same thing. Uh, every person that's here on the island, our our few neighbors that we do have, I told them all. She's community, come have at it, keys are always in it and use it. Um, so it's pure blessing that person gave it to us, but no, we're not gonna get rid of. The Honda, no way. Two hundred AM, she's mint, eighty-six, two hundred AM, we got an eighty-six F three fifty. I don't want it's up with all eighty-six stuff, but. Um, it's kinda cool, cause my old man had a nineteen eighty-six, two hundred AM, exact same bike, brand new. And he recently actually just showed me a picture of it, him up on a bog somewhere, mint, looks exact same, the same, was brand new and mint.
Yeah.
So.
Super nice, super nice.
I like it.
Kent Clark, I like that. Kubota. Oh, someone said, did you think, have you thought about getting a Kubota? Not saying Kubota Clark, that's pretty funny.
Look at all these memberships.
Wow, welcome to the club, Heather.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, so good.
What's that, Oil Clark, Axel Clark, nah, that's Oil.
Might as well be Cabinet Clark.
Plus come on, tell me there's some Seinfeld fans here. Harry, Harry Court Seinfeld fan here, I've watched all seasons, I don't know how many times. If I need a comfort blanket for my eyes, it's Seinfeld.
Yeah, mine's The Office. I love Michael Scott, he's so funny. Yes. Uh, oh shoot, where'd it go?
Gord is actually a Seinfeld fan too.
Yes. Uh, Lori asks, how many weeks pregnant are you now? I am sixteen weeks pregnant. So, uh, on my app, the baby's as big as like an avocado. What? Amazing.
Okay, show these people around the house. Kelly, Kelly, Kelly will sit here all night chatting. Kimber, does it say Kimber Clark? That's a good name.
Kimber's pretty cool. Kimber.
I agree, Colt Cooler Clark. Hell yeah, brother.
No.
Colt Cooler.
You get out of here, Cosmo.
Hello, Cosmo, asthma Seinfeld peeps.
Oh, Cosmo's kinda cool.
Kelly, I've tried to get Kelly to watch Seinfeld, she's not into it, she's not into it.
Oh, you didn't even think of this one, Kramer Clark.
Of course I thought of that.
Oh, you didn't.
Yeah, but no, Kramer's, just like calling them fucking.
Kramer, that's Matt's favorite ham.
Alright, let's try.
Alrighty. Alright, guys, thanks for all the questions. We're gonna show you around the house, stick around, stick around, Matt's gonna come grab the camera. How old are you guys? Twenty-six, Matt's thirty-four?
Yes, old man that I am. Kelly likes the older man.
Well, what can I say?
Alright. Can I flip the camera here?
Milwaukee for a boy, I love it.
Ooh, look at that.
Yes.
Look at that oven. That thing just came up here from the Bjorn Peninsula. From our buddy Albert Pike's old man, he took this thing out of his old cabin and wanted to go to a good home. We got this thing for. You know, five finger discount boy. Look at that, that old wooden lay, he can't buy it like that anymore, that's, you know. Tell me, that's over thirty years, you see those clocks? Look at that. That thing is mint, right?
Someone said the bed's gone too.
The bed is gone.
Yes, we finally moved the daybed. The dogs are not too happy because they can't have their nose ripe in the bacon or steak, but it is much more effective.
Eventually, we'll put real countertops here, right? This will all be real eventually, it's just temporary.
Everything's just temporary, guy. She's all just temporary.
And where's the headline?
Oh, Lord. Can I turn the light on?
Uh, yeah. Turn the Gord light.
Big changes in here, friends.
Wow, so here's the daybed, the dogs moved from the kitchen out to here.
Happy pups.
Happy pups. This is our new, we've had it in here for a while, I didn't show it in the video though, Valley Comfort. They don't make these anymore, thing as a unit, old neighbor Gord hooked us up with this thing.
Yeah.
And it might not be pretty, if you don't know wood stoves or whatever, it doesn't look good. If you know wood stoves, you know it doesn't get any better than this. This thing can hold wood, you know, like twenty, uh, two foot, easy.
Yeah.
Eat it and you can close her in tight and she'll run all night, all night.
All night long. We just hung this thing up.
Yep.
Someone gave this to us while we were at the hardware store and threw it in the back of our truck, thank you if you're watching. So that's great.
Brand new ceiling, beams, as you know, you guys seen us do this half already. We just finished doing this. There's the dogs. Oh, I hope ladies watching, there's the Foxfire books. That a scout blessed us with. There's enough information, those Foxfire books restart humanity, basically.
Yeah, let me just give them a preview. What does Foxfire nine got for us? Oh, General Storrs. Uh, a kettle, kettle wabon Indian Potter. Okay, let's see what else we got.
Oh my god, our big readers.
Should we make a Gord banjos? We can make a Gord banjo, that's pretty sick, song blows wooden locks, a water-powered sawmill. Wow. Yeah, there's so much in these books. You guys are awesome.
Yep.
Southern Folk Pottery, I love that.
Wouldn't you, oh, hmm, someone asked why didn't install subfloor.
Oh.
Uh, don't need her.
Oh, yes, we're gonna get a real floor in here one of these days. This was a huge improvement, I have to say, my friends, just getting this place cleaned up today took us all day.
Yep.
But it's so worth it. Now it feels so much more comfortable, way less like a construction zone.
Yep.
All our construction stuff is just in that corner. Our bedroom is reset, thank the Lord, we've spent the last two nights in the kitchen. Uh, sleeping on the daybed, I was on the daybed, Matt was on the cot and the dogs were on the floor. So they're very happy to be back in their bed, right next to the warm wood stove.
Five thousand and forty-eight scouts here right now in the room. You imagine five thousand scouts here? Give them one too. Hit me with your best answer before we shut her down. Okay, well, cats, the cats are gone, people, we were explaining, you gotta go back and watch, the cats are gone.
We rehomed them, they're not dead, geez, saying this are gone sounds a little morbid.
Yeah, they're not gone.
No, the cats are just rehomed, Gord's sister uh took them on and they're living happily ever after on the other section over there. We can literally vote to them, paddleboard to them, no biggie, and they love it.
Okay, let's tally this up. We're going two point. Seven thousand, twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Holy.
Those come in.
Wow.
In the ledger, bringing this up to us. Plus eighty-six fourteen, plus twenty-seven oh eight.
Someone with the math, that's really.
Eight, nine, ten, six, twelve, uh, it's like tw- twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
Wow.
Something like that. So congratulations on you guys, can we see how many members are here now?
Maybe.
Drag us all up.
We're gonna figure this out, y'all. Yes, I hope you guys like that little tour of the house. So many, oh, uh, can you go?
Woo, okay, we gained a lot.
You guys, some of you guys have joined the Scope memberships just on this live video, so if you did, thank you so much. You are adding, you are a raindrop added to the river that is flowing, my baby.
We're at fifteen hundred and fifteen, we started this conversation with fourteen hundred twenty-seven.
Wow.
Congratulations, boys. That's huge. All that uh revenue goes straight to the cause, straight to Camp. Scout, Scotland, uh, we're gonna do it, excuse me, I forgot my throat, whatever else could we come up with? Where's the clown? I've seen some say, where's the clown?
I saw that too. Maybe that's the ghost we have in this house, is that clown, that's the creepiest thing.
The clown's upstairs, we still got the clown.
No, the clown is, I feel like I recently saw him.
It's not throwing it out, we're afraid to throw it out.
Yeah, I actually, story time real quick, I actually tried to throw it out, I put it in the buggy one day. And I was so happy, I was like, get this thing out of here, he's so creepy and freaks me out. And the next morning, he was like right in the kitchen, up on the shelf in the old kitchen where you know it's all dark and dingy. And I looked up and I literally was like, Matt, did you, did you touch the clown? And he was like, no, what are you talking about? I s- I started crying, like crying hard. I was so scared, but then he told me he moved it, so.
Anyway.
Make a long story longer.
Yes, Kelly, make a long story longer.
These are my friends, anyway.
Another Lisa V, welcome, girl.
Yes, welcome.
Case goats, that's uh, it's nine o'clock here in Newfoundland. Fun fact for Newfoundland, if you're not Newfoundland, or Newfoundland's got its own half hour time zone, or half hour ahead of the rest of Canada.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, it's late here, nine o'clock, we usually try and be in bed, sleep by ten, so we got an hour to eat supper and hurry up to bed. That won't happen, we get pretty amped up talking to all you guys.
Yeah, I still gotta roll out my little uh garlic knots and put some food on the stove. See, Mr. Coe says, we love Kelly's chats, hey, thank you. Ah, thanks, thanks, you guys are awesome. You guys are awesome.
Great live, thanks. Um.
Yeah.
Okay, boys, we love you, thank you for being here. Um, again, we're not expecting or asking for anything, you just keep on watching these Sunday videos.
Yeah.
Um, that's contribution enough. You go out in your community in real life this week. Talk about what you're seeing here, talk about what you're thinking about, um, and else, else fails. Just do a simple thing, just hold the door open for a person at the store, that's it. We all started holding the doors open for each other, the world would be world peace just like that, that quick. But hold the door open for one person this week and let's make a difference, just like that, just do that.
Yeah.
Um.
If you're at the grocery store and the person checking you out has really nice eyes, tell them, people love that stuff.
People do love that.
Yeah, it's so nice. And whenever I say to someone, I'm like, ah, it just feels so good, just to give love for just. Doing it, you know, just to do it, to do it, you know, a lot of us don't get that, a lot of us don't get like those affirmations or just like sweet comments and, you know. Yes, the world can be a big daunting place, but also it's full of amazing people, like literally all forty-five hundred of you guys. Who are on here right now, like, you guys are great people. And y'all let the people around you know. So be kind, share some love, and yeah, thank you guys so much for joining us, thank you for the people who donated. Thank you to the people who joined up on memberships. We're so stoked to hear all of your uh feedback and that you guys love the idea for Scotland. And yeah, we're gonna keep on keeping on.
Uh, gotta say it.
What is it?
And good day from Australia, nine thirty-five AM here.
Good day, good morning, mate.
Good day, good morning, Rose.
We love the Aussies.
Oh, I love Aussies.
You guys are so great.
I always loved Aussies, don't lie. Abroad traveling, anyone who's abroad traveling, you know how many Aussies every country you go to, there's Aussies everywhere, love them. Newfies, Nazi, they just get along. I mean, this, this isn't a symbol for getting along, I don't know. They get along.
Oh, you're so silly.
Okay, boys, love you, we're turning it off.
We love you guys, have a great morning or a great night, wherever you are, be kind, we love you and we'll see you on Sunday.
See you Sunday peeps.